Text me, she's on her way.
Ryan, do you have the only one leaving the van? Does anyone else have the van?
I'm guessing that's where these guys are. Are you?
Was that yours? I don't know what he said.
I had to call this meeting to order. Roll call is Mrs. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Hares. Mrs. Bachman. Mr. Haskins.
Here.
Mr. Cammerer.
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel. Dr. Wogle.
Here. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Anderson to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ohs? I will need an approval for an executive session.
I move the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Cammerer that the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session. Vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bachman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Cammerer.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel. Dr. Wogle.
Yes. Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things but in everything, not for some students but for all students. Welcome to our guests. If you would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Anybody here? Seeing none, we'll go to the board members. Ms. Anderson?
I have nothing.
Uh, Ms. Hoskins?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Ms. Bachman?
I would like to thank everyone that participated in the very chilly, um, uh, golf educate, uh, golf outing today for the PV Education Foundation. It was a great event, um, once again, and a lot of organization put into it, but it was very chilly. So, um, I'd like to thank everyone who attended, everyone who sponsored a hole, everyone who, uh, helped in any way and participated, um, much appreciated. It goes to a great cause.
Thank you. Ms. Cammerer?
Nothing to say.
Uh, back to Louis.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. Zimmer?
Nothing at this time, but I will next time.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Okay, Ms. Damon?
Mr. Is an updated personnel agenda in your file.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Struce?
Uh, just two things real quick. First off, can everyone in attendance hear well?
Some people, yes, but some people not. Like, I couldn't hear Ms. Damon very well. I, I don't know if it's all people.
All right, we'll continue to work through. The reason I'm asking is we have the new sound system in place tonight, so we're working on some of the sound with the microphone system and the sound, so we'll keep working that through as we go here, but just wanted to double check. Um, second of all, I just wanted to mention is, as Molly just shared about the golf outing, we were able to fill all one hundred and forty-four slots for the golf outing. It was a chilly event, and just do also want to thank everyone that participated and that helped raise money for our student scholarships. Um, it's a great event today. Very cold, but great time. So, thank you to everybody.
I, I just wanted to, um, say that, uh, we had two robotics teams. They were not sponsored by the, but they're not Pleasant Valley teams, but there were several Pleasant Valley students who participated in the national, actually the international, the world robotics competition. It was in Houston this last weekend. I happened to be in Houston as well, so I, I saw robotics kids from all over the world. It was pretty impressive. There were thousands of kids there, and it was great that Pleasant Valley, uh, students from Pleasant Valley were represented at the world's robotic competition this year. So, okay, um, consent agenda. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cammerer, second by Ms. Hoskins to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Approval of bills. We will start with the general fund.
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-one cents in payment of invoices present, presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Cammerer that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eighty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Bachman that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Elementary junior high activity fund.
I move that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seven thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
Again, Ms. Anderson? Motion by Ms. Cammerer, Mr. Cammerer, second by Ms. Anderson that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. High school activity fund.
High school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Anderson that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Capital projects fund.
I move that capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-five hundred in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bachman, second by Mr. Cammerer that the capital project funds warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Pepper fund.
I move the pepper fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eighteen thousand four hundred forty-two dollars and twelve cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cammerer, second by Ms. Hoskins that the pepper fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Internal service fund.
I move that internal service fund warrant sixty-three sixty-two to sixty-three sixty-eight be issued in the total amount of five hundred and two thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Anderson that the internal service fund warrant sixty-three, sixty-three sixty-two to sixty-three sixty-eight be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Trust fund.
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-four cents in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Bachman, second by Ms. Hoskins that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, uh, moving on to old business, we have a second reading of board policy series three hundred. Uh, Mr. Struce?
So, going through from our last board meeting, we were introduced, you had a chance to read through these and look at them. Um, for the most part, some are very similar than the majority of the positions. We've kind of put them in a universal plan going forward. Uh, so I was gonna kind of walk you through some of these as we go through. If you have questions, please feel free to ask. Tonight would be a chance to ask questions for revisions. Uh, then our next board meeting, that would be the final, and if there isn't more changes, then we make the final revisions at that time and place them on our updated policy list. And you look at the board policies, going through the first one there, the statement of guiding principles, there is no changes to that policy there. The same would be true for the second one, the administrator code of ethics, no changes on that one.
I've got a question on that one.
Okay.
It says honors contracts until fulfillment, release, or dissolution mutually agreed upon by all parties. My question is, what if we're dismissing a staff member who doesn't want to be dismissed? It's not going to be mutually agreeable.
No, from administrative standpoint, we'd work through what that would look like in terms of with the board if that was, you know, if we're dismissing them, how we'd handle that. So, when you look at that, walking through the board, what you're asking on that piece.
Well, it's mutually agreed upon by all parties, so wouldn't just the administration and the board, but it'd be the person being dismissed as well, right? So, if that person didn't want to be dismissed, would they, would it be mutually agreeable? It's my question.
No. Like, that's where we go through the P I, for the personnel side, is how we handle that in terms of what that dismissal would look like at that point. Yeah. Uh, the next one, evaluation criteria, there is no changes there except the legal reference update. The qualifications for the superintendent, on that one there, we added the one line. It's the same that we had before. I A S B did put in there, which I added in there, the board made contract for assistance in a search for a superintendent. Again, just in the future, you just never know, um, that that is a possibility if you wanted to have a search firm, firm in the future. So, just added that line there because our policy did not have that. Underneath the actual contract, there are no changes to that policy from what we've had previously.
There was a little bit of redundancy in one of the parts of the, um, superintendent of schools contract.
Okay.
Where it says, um, six paragraphs, six paragraph, it is, it is within the discretion of the board to pay dues to professional organizations for the superintendent. See that? And then if you look at the very last sentence of this page, it says, it is within the discretion of the board to pay annual fees for professional organizations activities. So, are they, it seems like it's almost talking about the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
So, I didn't know if it needed to be said there twice.
See those? Debbie?
I do.
We can go back and reword that.
Okay.
On that one there.
And then on the next page, um, it says, the board expects a superintendent, the superintendent is considered a full-time employee, the board expects superintendent to give responsibilities to the position president over other employment. The superintendent may accept consulting or outside employment for pay as long as in the judgment of the board. The work is conducted on the superintendent's personal time, and it does not interfere with the performance of the superintendent's duties. So, my question is like, would you, would, would the superintendent, and there's actually another thing even on, on, on other administrators, will they have to come to the board to say, this is what I want to do and get approval from the board? Or if it just have been that, that you would just do knowing this without the approval of the board, but it's assuming that there's approval of the board here.
Correct. So, for example, you will see some superintendents will have like, um, work for consulting firm, or they go out and speak engagement. So, they would work with their board to say, okay, during that time when I'm doing that portion of my job, I'm not getting paid for what I would be doing here at that time.
Okay.
So, it'd be coming to you to say, okay, what does that look like if it's on school time or if it's on off time?
So, so you would inform at least the board if you, or any superintendent who comes in the, in the district, will have to inform the board if they're doing anything outside.
Correct.
Uh, and then they can work out how it works out.
Yes.
Because I also want to make sure there's no conflict of interest, those sorts of things as well. I think it's important that, policy above board.
Agreed. Yes.
Do you think that we should reword that then? Because in the judgment of the board, I mean, does that really say, does that say we're giving approval?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm saying it's, it's assuming that.
Yeah.
So, I would say pending board approval or something like that.
We could do that. The next one, the superintendent duties, this one here, when you look at this policy, before it was called, um, functions in our current board policy, I A S B has put additional items in there, um, which I think are, are, are strong ones to have. There is a section on page three that was in our current board policy. I think that is important to keep there. Working with other superintendents in the county and adjacent areas to enlist those three points. So, that is why you see that section in black, but the rest would be the I A S B recommendations for the duties, which we had just called functions previously.
Do we have any facilities that aren't schools?
We would not.
So, it does.
The bus barn would be one, the maintenance center would be a facility of ours.
Uh, the supervises methods of teaching supervision and administration in effect in the schools, I would recommend adding and district facilities.
So, which bullet point is that?
On page two, it's, uh.
Of school and facilities.
And district facilities.
Facilities. We'd have this building. We could do that in facilities, district facilities, yes. Anything else on that policy? The next one, superintendent evaluation, again, you'll see for the most part, actually that first paragraph underneath superintendent evaluation heading, that is the same as we've had previously, so that could be black on that one there. Uh, then you see the first two bullet points keeping that from our current one. The rest are very, I mean, there's just new points there, and that's recommended by I A S B. So, any questions on the additions or changes in the verbiage there? Superintendent professional development, this is again, a new policy reworded, it's about encouraging PD. And then the succession of authority to the superintendent in this policy, same as what we had before, but, um, with the director of student services added after the director of elementary education. How about that is the same. Administrative positions, again, looking at this one here, just the, uh, like the word hierarchy, but again, kind of working through the various positions we have in our district, kind of walking you through which, which those are, so that's an update there.
Is that a, an ordered list or is that not ordered?
So, I'm saying it's, it's an ordered list, and typically, the only time you really have an ordered list is if something were to, if I could not make a decision or something happened, who would be the next person in charge, you know, if I'm out of the district or something of that nature.
Perhaps you should change it on the, or set numbers on it.
Good.
What, what did she say? Have that numbered instead of bold?
Well, that's Mike where he, Mike thinks with where he wants to be in that list. Uh, administrative qualifications, as you look at three oh two point two. Here's where we, we changed it from every single position, for example, a principal or assistant principal or dean of students, each one being its own, to creating the universal. So, when you read administrative qualifications, this goes across the board in general, universal. Again, coming from I A S B, is their recommendation to make them universal versus each specific position that you have. Anything on that one? And then again, for administrative contract, again, you'd see this is a, a universal statement there, recommended from I A S B.
And then again, on this, the second last paragraph talks about the extra work. The board expects administrators to give responsibilities of a position in the school as president over other employment, and administrator makes up consulting or outside employment for pay as long as in the judgment of the board and superintendent. The work is conducted on the administrator's personal time and does not interfere with the performance of the administrative duties as contracted by the board. So, um, maybe that is something that you, you need to approve.
Yeah, let us go back and work through that and just think of all the different examples.
Probably that needs to come to the board unless you feel it needs to, but at least somebody should be saying it's okay.
Yeah.
This one also says it is the responsibility of the board to set salary and benefits of the administrators. I think their question is, is the board setting those or are you setting those within the confines of the budget?
So, I'd say we set those in, in terms of the confined of the budget, and then we bring it to your approval after negotiations is over.
So, maybe we can do that sentence, I guess, as well. Because we're not setting the salary and benefits. Fourth paragraph.
Yep. Let us look into that one further.
Yeah.
See how that should be worded.
Maybe to approve the salary, would that be a better word?
Mm-hmm.
Therefore, we're not setting it, we're just approving it.
Yeah. Let us explore that and see what the I A S B says in that. Okay? The next one, three oh two point four, this would actually be one that would not, this is, uh, you know, this would not be in there. It would actually start with the next one, that's just one that we did not get when we were taking ones in and out. So, three oh two point four would not be there, but then it kicks into the three oh two point four, and you'll see all those positions and their job responsibilities or expectations. Um, from the director of secondary ed to the last one being, I think it was the chief financial officer. All those ones are listed there in that grouping. So, that's where the individual functions, extra duties comes in. Was there any question on wording or any of those positions that you noticed?
I just had one question. Um, I don't think there's necessarily needs to be a change, but on page one of code three oh two point four, directory of secondary education duties.
Mm-hmm.
Number thirteen, where, um, overseas support is the coordinators of the teacher leadership system, but then the extended learning program, second language program, and special education programs. Is that because they're above the director of student services, or would those items move more to director of student services and not be under the realm of this?
So, with, with, we were correcting these before we did that, so for example, it might be in collaboration with, but we would move the E L P, the E S L, and special ed to the director of student services, yes. And that'd be the three oh two point four E three. And it might actually, instead of oversee, we could have, also have support there.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah. Good catch on that one. Okay, that would take us to three oh two point five, which is the evaluation for administrators. Again, this is new, it's all new because of the new ten standards that we have, um, for all of our evaluations. And I would say there is one change bef- before the first, um, bullet point where it says the principal, that would be all administrators there. This is again, it's universal, it's not just a building principal. Is everyone caught up to that one? And then the next one, the professional development, again, similar to the one we had for superintendents, this is just for all administrators. This one here.
The professional development one?
Correct.
Um, the se- the second paragraph, the last sentence, I wondered, this bringing it to the attention of the board, I seem to remember one of the earlier policies was actually just bringing that to the attention of the board president, and I'm wondering if that's more applicable for corporates or regional boards. I can't remember what the other policy was in the same series, if it was a reference.
Board president.
This is, uh, three oh two point six.
Okay, let's go back and look at that and see.
Yep.
Three oh three point one is a new one that we did not have previously. Questions there? The next one, the code of ethics, this is actually one we had in the beginning, so it was just later on, so we just gotta take this one out. We already have it included as three hundred point one, so that three oh four point one won't be there. And then that brings us to the last one, which is the communication channels.
So, um, on the communication one, I had a question. It says, if resolution is not possible by any of the above, individuals may bring it to detention of the superintendent within five school days. This is after the, um, uh, employee or somebody has a concern and they've talked to the principal already. So, it goes right from the principal to the superintendent. So, where does the director of primary and secondary education?
I think it would depend upon what, um, the situation is and how it's going through, because we have, if it's a grievance, we have the procedure in board policy one hundred, how that would work out, um, and some other channels. So, let's go back and revisit this one here if we need to add that layer in there.
Okay, that's what I was curious to know. So, you got all the notes on that?
Good.
Okay.
All right, we'll go back and review those. Thank you.
We'll review, view all those issues, and then we'll bring it back again one last time at the next meeting for final approval. So, we'll get a revised copy once they work through the, the, the verbiage after the input that we've made. And of course, if you look through it again and you see any types of grammatical errors or anything at all, please let, um, Ms. Damon know.
And we'll add the table of contents, so all that'll be what you'd see for the final copy next time.
So, there's, uh, no required motion on that. Now, we're gonna go to, um, new business, Bridgeview Elementary North Parking Lot, Mr. Struce.
So, before we have, um, I may come forward, just kind of want to give you an update on this one here. This is one of projects that we were looking at previously on our five-year plan. Uh, we were hoping that we could just move forward with, um, we have a settling point out on our north parking lot where it seems to be eroding quite extensively. We were hoping we could do a fill. But after further review, we believe we need to go in and actually redo that, that parking lot completely. Um, so Bob will talk about that here tonight. Um, this is one that we had reduced off our five-year plan. But we met with, um, Riehl and I met with our high school and track company regarding our current track and our football field that we're gonna replace a year from now, um, and what that would cost, the drainage, and we believe we will have, uh, a savings on that project that what we had budgeted. So, we'll be transitioning that money, part of that funding, to this parking lot in our five-year plan to make this possible. So, at this time, we'll have Bob come forward and kind of just walk you through this project and the timeline that we'd be looking at uh, yet for this summer.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, so, to kind of expand on what Brian was talking about, um, you know, right now, the, the existing concrete parking lot, um, a lot of the, a lot of the joints have started to separate, getting a lot more water infiltrating into those, and kind of go through those freeze thaw cycles, um, we're getting that, that heaving and settling of, of the existing pavement, and it's just continuing to deteriorate, uh, to a point where, um, you know, it's, it ju- it needs to be fully replaced. So, uh, we're proposing to, uh, replace the parking lot, um, in its current layout. Uh, we're not changing any parking stall counts, maintaining the existing flow of the parking lot. Um, as, as part of the project, we're also gonna replace, uh, that set of stairs, um, kind of in the center there, uh, that gives you access from the parking lot to the building. Looking at replacing the, uh, the concrete lot with, uh, with asphalt. Help manage some of the, some of the, uh, softer soils there. Current schedule, uh, for that, um, pending board approval this evening to move forward, uh, we would look to advertise the bids on Wednesday, May fourth, uh, with a public bid opening, um, kind of leave that scheduled for Thursday, May nineteenth, uh, with, uh, with hope to, to award bids and have the public hearing at the Monday, May twenty-third school board meeting. Answer, any questions you guys might have specifically regarding, uh, regarding the project?
And then, uh, once the bids are accepted, or whichever bid is accepted, is the plan for it to be done this summer?
Construction this summer, yep. Uh, begin, uh, once school's out with completion prior to the end of the year.
Prior to the end of the?
Prior to the start of the school year.
We have about, and now are there any summer activities that are gonna be occurring at Bridgeview this year?
No, we do summer school at, uh, well, we're doing Hopewell this year most likely. And junior high may be at Hopewell also because of the construction projects that we have with the road up there, so. We'll be okay there.
How is that, because we have another project, oh, is this, this is Bridgeview or Rosink and Pleasant View?
Yep.
You're right, you're right, there is, that's your project that's gonna be happening in Pleasant View.
You said there's an erosion occurring in this.
You pointed out where that is.
Yeah.
So. What's occurring is we've got, you know, um, you know, the concrete parking lot, we've got all our, all our joints and stuff like that. Just, just throughout the years, especially, uh, with, with heavy salt use, those edges start to deteriorate as we get your water infiltrating underneath your pavements. And type of soils, um, you know, that we encounter out here, uh, we've got a, it's a, it's a high silt content. And when you get the water in those silts, uh, the soil likes to, likes to slide around. Uh, within those silts, you've got a lot of fat clays, fat clays tend to hold that water. So we've got a soil, a soil type that's holding infiltrated water in place. And then, uh, the other characteristic is you've got those, uh, the plates of the silt sliding around. So as, as these individual areas get that water in there in the winter time, they freeze and come up. And then you get that thaw and it slides back down. It's slowly starting to kind of leak away, um, which only causes more water to infiltrate, which only causes problems. And it more rapidly, so, um, with, with what we're proposing, uh, we're doing, proposing a full concrete curb and gutter surround. It'd be reinforced, uh, with a bar and it's gonna kinda act like a, uh, like, like a, a ring to hold that in place. And then, uh, with the, with the asphalt being proposed there, um, a, a, a lower cost option initially and also, uh, long-term for, for maintenance. We, we start to run in an area of deterioration again, a lot more cost effective and simple to cut that out and patch it back in.
Um, you said you were replacing the stairs right there in the middle? I'm having a hard time picturing that at Bridgeview, I've been there, I can't recall ever seeing stairs there.
It's kinda hides because this edge of the parking lot, it's up a few more feet than the left side over there. Uh, there's, there's a set of stairs, maybe two or three risers.
Two or three risers.
Real, real small.
There's not anything that we have to account for, like a ramp for transportation of students or anything?
We're not, we're not, we're not changing the intended use of it.
Okay.
It's not a, it's not a new parking lot.
Right, there's another way for them to get in, those stairs are just about one meter.
Right, right, yeah, we, we, I mean, it is hatched out just to, to maintain that open space.
Other questions from the board? If not, then I will take the motion.
I know if the board are putting out the elementary parking lot project. Second?
Well, by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Anderson, that the board approved I-MEG for the, for the Bridgeview Elementary Parking Lot Project. Will I have a statement?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Tenwaish?
Yes.
Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Dr. Warren Blake?
Yes. Next, uh. Business is Pleasant Valley Junior High Edition and renovation project, Mr. Struce.
So we have with us tonight FRK, Tom and Kyle are here. They've been working with us on the schematic designs of the junior high, uh, for probably a good six to eight months already. We've been working through this process and wanted to come forward to you tonight to show you with the additional growth that we have at the junior high and the expected enrollment that's coming forward, the project that we have in place. And they wanna walk you through that tonight to see the extensivity of this and what it will look like, both as the new addition that we're adding and also some renovation within the current building. For example, you'll see the cafeteria to gain more space there. So really, tonight is an opportunity for you to see what we're talking about. Um, and then we'll take a motion to continue on with this process to put it really into fine-tuned work in terms of timelines and so forth. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom and Kyle to walk through and Kevin will take you through some of the information as well.
Very good. Superintendent Struce, thank you very much, board members, uh, Tom Wallen with FRK, Kyle Sandage. Uh, thanks for your time tonight. Uh, before we get started, I, I just wanna compliment Brian and his team. Um, uh, we've had just a lot of great input, uh, from teachers, from administrators, uh, from Leland. And, uh, so we really feel like we're, we're gathering good information on what this project wants to look like. So we're excited to share with you today. So I'm gonna go just some high-level things. If you wanna go to the next slide, we'll, we'll talk about who your team is on the project, um, we'll review the scope. Uh, we'll talk about the schedule and then Kyle will walk us through some drawings. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at the end of the presentation. And you all do have a bound book with all this information as well. So this is more of a distilled version of what you see there in front of you. So the next slide just again reminds everybody about who the players are. Um, at FRK, as you know, and all the projects that we've done with the district, um, the district, students, stakeholders, you are at the center of everything that we do, so we keep that as our focus. Um, FRK Architects Engineers is the lead on the project. Uh, we do have a structural engineer in the house, so we do our own structural engineering. And then, uh, Bob Jokowski and, uh, his fellow engineers at I-MEG will be providing civil engineering with Bob and then mechanical engineering. So we're using I-MEG engineers again, uh, for this project. And then to the project's scope, this is kind of distilling, uh, the narrative that you see in, in your booklet. But, um, the, the project is proposed to, uh, put sixteen classroom addition on the southwest corner of the junior high school. We're putting it there so that we block the northwest winds from the parking lot. Because when we were there the last time, I think we got snowed in pretty much, so. And this would include, um, science classroom with the flex classroom that could be used for science in the future, uh, some more flex, a brand-new art room, new kiln and storage. And then a, a, a new main office, uh, to replace the existing office with a new entry into the building. Uh, we would also be looking at expanding your existing cafeteria to the east with some more, uh, table space there. And then your existing, uh, main office would be, uh, repurposed to become your guidance suite. And then the existing, um, uh, FCS classroom will be completely renovated to be more in tune with where programming is going for family consumer science, as well to, uh, uh, handle the additional number of students that will be in the building for, for lab space and for classroom purposes. The existing special needs suite then would become a teacher lounge with, um, some, uh, place to make lunch and to have teacher mailboxes there. And the existing art room will be captured by your music program, so not a whole lot to do there, but just kind of repurposing that space. Um, and then the lovely nineteen seventies tile in the original toilet rooms, we'll look at upgrading those. Though mid-century modern is coming back, we might just get right back in again, the same thing. And then, uh, the south facade of the building, um, we all know as we've been there that the paint is peeling. We just need to, just enhance that again for a nice public presence. Um, and then on the MEPT side, we'll be, uh, looking at what's required to, um, provide, uh, heating, cooling and services of new addition and, and the renovation areas. We'll be net replacing an aging chiller, which is part of your heating and cooling system, and an emergency power generator. And then Bob will work on the site to accommodate the new addition and how the traffic flow will work there. So the next slide talks about schedule. Um, we are at the end of schematic design phase, which is kind of as, if you, it, it's self-descriptive. It's a very schematic, uh, point at which we are at. Um, the next phase, we would go, uh, pending board approval this evening, is called design development. We'll regroup with all of the staff in the building and we'll talk very specifically about where the outlets will be, where the walls will be, what the cabinets will look like, and make sure we refine the program. Again, we've, we've had some good input even as of last Friday from administrators with some things we're gonna look at as we move into the design development stage. Um, we'll work on the construction documents, uh, over the summer months. Um, that's putting the blueprints together. And then we would look to have this project hit the streets for bidding first part of fall. And then, uh, award the contract so that the contractors can get their paperwork and what we call submittals, all of the elements go into the building, get that paperwork to us on the design team to review and, and be able to hit the ground running as soon as, uh, spring thaw allows us to get construction going. So that's the overall schedule. The project would be ready in the summer, late summer of twenty twenty-four, uh, to open up with the new facility, uh, the new additional space for that school.
And just to let you know, when we started originally, we had a elongated construction window of time. Um, but after our last conversation, we feel like this one will allow us to be where we need to be and still be done for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we feel very comfortable, knock on wood, we feel comfortable that this will be a, a, a doable timeline for us.
One of the drivers on that is, um, you've been hearing and, and you are experiencing yourselves, I'm sure, supply chain issues. But some of that is easing, the, the company that builds the steel joists, they open up a brand-new plant, so the lead time to get those materials is shortened. And then again, you'll see that kind of pinkish color, contracting to submittals. We'll encourage contractors to be very aggressive to get their items ordered so that they'll be there in time during the construction phase. So the next slide, uh, just shows some initial, uh, ideas of what the building, you've seen that in the front cover and as well as in your pamphlet. But we're really looking at using the Pleasant Valley blue color, of course, and, uh, making a more prominent entrance into the building where the new entry, uh, sequence would be. And then, uh, kind of depending where budget lands, as we're being very mindful of the budget for the project, um, we'll use very standard materials so that blends in with the existing building. But we'll look for some options perhaps to, to accentuate, um, some of the, uh, the blue color at some, some moments on the building. When we look at the floor plans with Kyle here in a moment, you know, one of your options, just to kind of think about cost containment is instead of adding sixteen classrooms now, perhaps we add twelve classrooms with the idea we add four more later. Just, we don't need those four quite yet. It's cheaper to do it now rather than later, but if, if again, we are up against a budget constraints. So the building would just get a little shorter, but look very similar to what we're seeing here in terms of the aesthetic and the, the public view. So we'll look at some of the floor plans here that Kyle will lead us through.
Kevin, can you go back one slide just so real quick? So when Kyle goes through the floor plan and Tom just mentioned, we may end up taking off four classrooms off the south end from a budgetary standpoint, where you see on that bottom picture, where Tom is pointing right now, those, that'd be the classrooms that would not be on the building. So you would not see the blue if we don't go with those classrooms, you would not see the blue on this phase. But in the future, should we add those on, we would put that blue on those corners. But you gotta plan for future expansion.
So it's these, it's these four?
Yep, exactly. So Kyle will go through those now if you can see what the floor plan looks like.
So just to touch on that, it would be these four classrooms. Try to keep the main entrance sort of where it is. Uh, new main entrance will just shift down to the south here, this will be your new main entrance, secure as you build right off the main reception area here. This is that big blue box you see on all the renderings. Moving the administration area here, we'll have spaces for reception, um, principal, um, four additional offices, restrooms, a nurses' suite and conference room and additional storage and a copy room there too. Again, from here, we'll have the potential to have sixteen classrooms or, or, or twelve. Life spaces, following the same logic of the science classrooms here, same size classrooms. Two life spaces that would either be science or expansion of the FCS program, art classroom here, kiln, storage. We have our gang restrooms here, be the additional restrooms for this.
Not for gangs, but that's, um, architecture speak for, uh, public restrooms.
Old admin space being turned into the guidance offices. This would be the teacher's lounge, um, FCS room addition or renovation, um, and the cafeteria addition here. And the next slide will be a larger version of that.
Yep.
So now we can see, uh, some of the details of what actually going on in your administration suite. Old administration suite, new FCS classrooms. And the next slide would be.
Four cots for the nurses' office, which I think is really what we needed as that building expands.
And the nurses' office is four cots and then a treatment room also, and, and a restroom. Isn't that quite a lot of space with the, with the driveway on that east side of the building to do an addition to the, to the cafeteria? So we can add some, about eleven hundred square feet of additional seating space. Um, with this layout and this kind of seating, fit eighty-four students in there. Potential to change of the seating and maybe add a few more, but eighty-four to ninety is about the max space.
So will that building come out, there'll be a sidewalk and then?
Right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you go back? So you see, um, where it says, uh, in, in the new administrative area there where the reception is, this little spot that says collab?
What, so what is, is that?
So we noticed when we were touring the building, a lot of students seemed to be using the hallways for studying or reading. And we thought in this new addition, we could give a space for that. And we chose to put it here, close to the administration area, so there's a lot of visibility. So there's, um, either students can sit there and if they're waiting for parents to pick them up, they could have a little space to sit. That would also be visible from the main office.
Be some soft seating in there, just a little bit more of a, a nicer area alcohol of the circulation.
Also we have our bus drivers, as they have the layover between times, some bus drivers hang out in that area anyway now. So it'd be a nice place for them to sit and wait as they're there.
Sorry. Great, thank you. I should have mentioned, very informal, happy to have questions as we're presenting as well, so appreciate that.
You know, one thing on the cafeteria, which there, this is one that we've been contemplating quite extensively. We had the junior high go through and look at if we did not add this on, could they have four lunch periods instead of three? Um, and it just gets, it's tight and then it changes your time schedule, doesn't work real well. So that is the reason why you're seeing this format here as a possible option to add on. Stay with three lunch periods and still handle the growth moving forward.
Next slide, the FCS classrooms. Sticking with the same space that they have, but there's five labs now, we can raise down six labs. So by doing this, we're, there's still kind of people that pick up the wall here, open it up, six foods labs and in, um, classroom scale here, storage for the sewing movement, pantry configuration down there. And we also have a washer and dryer.
And those would be half walls that project out where those stations are, so there'd be that visual connection from the instructor to the students.
So very, very much open, more collaborative than that perhaps. And I believe the next slide is just some of the interior renderings.
Again, when you look, sorry, Kyle, when you look at this, again, our, our goal is to have it, uh, a very nice entrance, um, but nothing over the top in terms of what we're trying to do and just keep it, uh, nice and clean and very inviting.
And one thing I forgot to mention in the hallways, with some of those interior classrooms not having windows next to them, we're gonna bring light into the hallways, very similar to what we've been doing in this building. So each of those hallways will have, uh, the, the higher ceilings with lots of natural light coming in. And then natural light, we would then put windows in the interior classrooms and that light could be spilled over into those interior classrooms.
Does a flat roof result in higher maintenance costs?
Sorry, I should say a low-slope roof.
You know, that is one that Kyle has mentioned, in terms of those, um, windows on top. You know, that is something if we were looking for a cost savings you could take off, but we feel it's really been beneficial when you walk through the new facility, that natural light that comes through just creates kind of a calmness in the hallways as well. So something we consider long-term, but right now, we kind of like to keep it in there.
And the reason to not do that, that angled look is this is a much more prominent, visible end of the building that would be adding on and we're keeping with the same geometries, which are a little more linear than angled like that, so. Cost-wise, similar, um, just a little different.
Brian, are there any, so we're gonna just lose part of the parking lot there, but was that just really bus stacking there? Does that cause any problems with the parking lot or what does that mean for that?
So that's one thing we'll continue to look at. Uh, right now, I think we're losing about eight angles, parking spots for buses there, and that's who would be there at this. And that's who would be there at this point. So we've talked about, you know, again, where does the parking go? We can extend, you know, right now we have the one long diagonal in the front. You could put a double row of diagonals there. And we've also talked about where the softball field is potentially having to put some parking lots around the backside of the softball field. And where they'll do all the staging for this construction also. So there's availability to keep adding on some parking.
That's where Bob will do his magic. And just a couple more renderings to look at here as. And you have a copy of this PowerPoint that you can keep your records also.
I just can't have a, I just don't have a visual of, it's hard for me to imagine that we still have any green space left after we build all that. I guess I'm just not imagining how big the space is.
Once you get past the circular, the drive that around the perimeter of the whole building, you've got the fields to the east, to the north, softball to the south. On the west side, you have, you're already up against the fence line and the agricultural space over there. But right around the building, you'd have a little bit kind of in front of where the old administration is. But you're absolutely right, there just, there isn't going to be a whole lot of green space up in the building.
So should be talking about right on this very south side of that building. How much green space is there before you hit the, you know, where the blacktop runs around and comes back where people leave? How much green space do we still have there?
You have three bocce ball courts. Probably about 50 feet from the edge of the building to where the sidewalk would be somewhere in that, well, maybe less, 35 feet perhaps. We looked at lots of ideas to maximize that space efficiently. And some of the ideas, the building got too long and then just went right into that drive that was put in there recently. So we pulled it back. So there is some green space there still, but it's not a tremendous amount. It's just, it's kind of the nature of the site and the building.
I like the new, more prominent entrance. I think sometimes you pull up to the junior high and you just don't really know where to go.
And again, this will not disrupt any of the flow with the whole traffic.
No, that all stays the same, just other than the adjustments at the main entry where your bus drop off and pickup is. Have to adjust kind of how that works to accommodate the addition.
You know, so right now, if we were to do that project and you're looking at, if you took those four classrooms off the front, it pushes that right around 1,100 students that we could serve in that building, 1,050, somewhere in that area. So in the long term, the future, you could still add the four classrooms on the front if we don't put them on now. And in the back, we still have room for about four more classrooms. And by that time, we're probably looking at some new locker rooms, maybe another gymnasium. And then we'd probably be pretty much tapped out with where we are with the junior high. So long-term plans, getting to class size is about 650 in that building. But right now, we're looking at, like I said, right around 1,100 tops with this construction part of it. Our building right now is done at about 850 to 900. We're pretty full at junior high currently.
So the sheet we got today.
Yeah, be costing?
Yeah, it's the new classroom addition. I assume that's the 12 classrooms, not the 16, is that true?
What's showing up at the top there is the full build out for 16 classrooms, so 28,000 square feet. And then the value engineering options down here would be, here are some ways to save some money if you wanted to entertain looking at some of these. We call them kind of value engineering right now, but actually when it got closer to bid day, we would probably look at them as what we call an alternate bid. Where then you can know what the number is in bid day and choose to go that direction or not. So you can see some of the ways where we can be cost conscious. Kyle and I and all design professionals these days are really trying to follow the construction industry as closely as we can to monitor where the numbers are coming in. And of course, we all know they're a lot higher than they used to be. And we're looking at, it's still a few more years out before they begin to moderate. We're not going to go back to the numbers we've seen in the past with projects you've had in the district. But we're confident that the numbers you're seeing here accurately reflect where we're at at this moment in time. We have a whole nother round of design to do. We'll come back to the board at the end of the design development phase for your approval again. And we'll dip the dipstick in, look at where the costs are. And then we have another phase of construction documents and we'll come back at the end of that with a cost opinion. And to be closer to what we think the target will really be before you release us to issue the drawings for bid.
I think we got one more cost question. So the chiller and generator listed. Packet as alternate bid, but they're not on the separate sheet. So I'm wondering what age those two things are and what's the end of life for those.
We will be having some meaningful conversations with the IMEG engineers about that as move into the next phase. It's always been something we want to try to look at for longevity. And if we need to really make some difficult decisions, we could move those onto the sheet and look at those as either all value engineering options. I think Leland would very much like to see that chiller replaced. And I think the power generator is also on its last leg. So we'd really like to keep those in the project.
They are kind of at their end of life.
Yeah, absolutely. They're at that point.
So just put in perspective for all you, as we look at this project, you know, originally on the five-year plan, we had budgeted $6 million for this project. Obviously with cost expenses and where they're going today, you can see it'll be definitely higher than that. So we'll probably end up doing a borrow against our future sales tax, money which we've done in the past for other buildings. But that will be a way to cover whatever costs is above the $6 million that we had not budgeted for this originally. We'll be watching that closely and see what our options are.
Yeah, interest rates are rising on borrowing. So that's one of the things we need to look at too. Could be some, a factor in whether we do or don't subtract off those four classrooms and stuff. But we definitely have the capacity to borrow much more than we would need for this project.
Right. Looking at other construction projects, so we want to be mindful of that as well, that we don't use up a lot for this. And then maybe then have for other things or haven't put things on hold. So. But we still have several more iterations of this before we make a final decision. So any other questions? Now I will take a motion.
Move the board approve schematic documents, cost projections, plus the power addition and renovation project. With the stipulation that the architect continues to work to keep the project cost in alignment with the district's budget.
Motion by Mr. K. We're just saying that this document, schematic and schematic documents and cost projections for the Pleasant Valley Junior High addition and renovation project. With the stipulation that the architect continues to work to keep the project cost in alignment with the district's budget. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Camwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the next order of new business, which is going to be 2022. Thank you very much, both of you, for coming. And thanks, Leland, as well for being here. Our next item is 2022, 2023 school calendar Wednesday early out schedule, Mr. Strus.
So on the screen, you have a view of what the calendar would look like. We've been talking about back in January when we first discussed this. We approved our, we called it option A of our school calendar. And then the second part of this, we've been talking about was with the helping committee that was reviewing, what would it look like if we added a second early out to each month, which you'll see in the purple, which would be eight additional days throughout the year. And then this is what the group came and talked to, the helping committee members came and talked about on during our March board meeting. Wanted to bring this forward to you tonight because anytime we have a change to our calendar, we have to make sure that we bring it before board for approval and also for a public hearing. So walking through, as we shared in the video the other day, you know, the pros and cons of what we're looking at with this schedule. Mike and Cindy have talked about that previously as to what that third day would be utilized in terms of the collaboration time across grade levels or within a grade level. Between the levels of buildings, whether it's elementary, secondary, secondary or junior high into high school. They had reviewed what days of the week work best in terms of learning for our staff. You know, a lot of times we look at Fridays and it works better for families because they have the longer weekend going into the weekend. But from a school standpoint, we've talked about that's difficult for coaches because they're leaving and missing the professional development. So we've gone through all of those. You know, we looked at the early out, late start from a bussing standpoint. You know, with this schedule we have in mind, because we'd be losing that time at the elementary level from two to three o'clock is the early dismissal time. Basically they lose an hour in those eight days. So adding five minutes on to every single day actually put us a little bit ahead what our 1,080 hours would be. And an 8:25 start would give us that number there. So again, the helping committee has been working, meeting since December, going through various topics. And that's kind of where we are today to say, if you look at those eight dates, Kevin, if you'd scroll those days forward, you can see the first one would begin in September. You have the one in October, November is just before Thanksgiving. The one in December is actually the day before we would go into winter break. So that'd be the early dismissal there. And then you can see January, February, March does not happen because it's spring break. April 19th and then May 17th would be the last one. Those would be the eight days that would be used for collaboration time across the district. Any questions that you, they haven't heard or discussed previously in terms of that schedule?
Questions to any board members? As well? Okay. If not, then I'm gonna open up this for a public hearing. So we're here for any public comments regarding the early out, the extra additional early outs on Wednesdays. If anybody's here that wants to voice their opinion about it. Okay, seeing none, then I will need a motion. To the updated 2023 school calendar.
I move the board approve the updated hours based 2022, 2023 calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Camwisher, that the board approve the updated hours based 2022, 2023 calendar as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mr. Camwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the next order of business is a 2021. 2022, it'd be 2022, 2023. I'm sorry, this is, nevermind, 2021, 2022, certified budget amendment presentation. Ms. Fingerson Smith?
Okay, this is a normal procedure that we do at approximately this time of the year, each year. We are looking at amending our certified budget for the current fiscal year. This is the certified budget that would have been certified a year ago, back on April 12th, 2021. The reasons, the main reasons for amending the certified budget have to do with, the district receives miscellaneous income during the year. And we're amending the certified budget to reflect the spending of miscellaneous income that we've received this year that we did not anticipate receiving when we certified the budget a year ago. Also, the reason for amending the budget or the practice that we've always followed in amending our budget is we reflect spending all of the district balances in our various funds down to a zero balance at the end of the fiscal year. By doing so, the amended budget reflects the maximum amount that we could spend during this fiscal year. We would not actually spend all of our balances down to zero. That would not make sense to do that unless we absolutely had to. But it always has been the practice of the district to amend our budget, to reflect spending all of our balances down to zero. Again, that shows the maximum amount that we could spend in a fiscal year. Per section 257.7 of the Iowa code, the authorized expenditures of a school district may not exceed the lesser of either the district's certified budget plus any amendments for the fiscal year or the district's total authorized spending authority for the year, which includes the combined district cost for the year, the actual miscellaneous income received for the year, and the actual unspent balance from the previous year. So again, by amending the budget in the way that we do, it reflects the maximum amount that we could spend during this fiscal year. So you do have in your board packet the documentation that we normally present each year when we amend the budget. So I'd take any questions if anybody has any questions. Otherwise, we just need to open it up to a public hearing and then have a motion to amend the current year's certified budget for this year.
Any questions to Mike regarding the amended budget? Okay, more for the public. Anybody have any questions regarding the amended budget? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I move that the board amend the 2021, 22 budget as was adopted on April 12th, 2021 by changing estimates of expenditures as presented in the notice of public hearing for amendment of current budget for 2021, 22.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Brockman, that the board amend the 2021, 2022 budget as was adopted in April 12th, 2021 by changing estimates of expenditures as presented in the notice of public hearing for amendment of current budget for 2021, 22. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Camwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
And the next item is the March 2022 monthly financial statements. Mr. Fingerson Smith?
All right, you have a copy of those in your board packet. The only things that I would point out tonight are for revenue in the general fund, management fund and PAPL fund, property tax revenue. Property taxes, the main months that we receive property taxes in the spring are March, April and May. And so this reflects through the end of March. And we're running just a little bit behind where we were a year ago on percentage of property taxes received compared to where we were a year ago. That's just a timing thing. In the end, I anticipate that to catch up in the months of April and May. So a little behind here in March, but I expect that to catch up in April and May. The only other thing I would point out on the monthly financials, as I've been pointing out most of this fiscal year, is again, the nutrition fund. We continue to, of course, not charge students for the basic lunch in the nutrition fund. So food sales are much less than they would be if we were charging students for the price of the basic lunch. But that is more than being made up for by the reimbursement that we're getting from the federal government. So actually, our nutrition fund, fund balance, you can see, is over a million dollars higher at the current time than it was a year ago at March 31st, 2021. So we're not negatively being affected by the loss of revenue from charging students for the price of the lunches. That's all I had to point out on the March monthly financials unless anybody has any questions.
Looking at the chart and the last page, is state aid.
Right.
Is it normal for them to be off a million and a half? Does it just catch up because of timing or what's the, I'm looking at the target.
It's a timing thing. We do not receive state aid during the months of July and August. So really, we only receive our state aids paid over 10 months instead of 12 months. So it starts off the year behind, but then as the year progresses, once we get to the end of the fiscal year, it should catch up to be right around 100%.
No questions? Mike? Then I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial reports for March 2022 as presented.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Mr. Camwisher, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for March 2022 as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Camwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Okay, and then our next item is the executive session. You for coming?
Can we get better food in cafeteria though? Kids get better food in cafeteria.